Six o'clock, I'm going to go ahead and open the meeting, have prayer by Steve Ayers, like lines in the next church.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you, and we thank you for the very breath that we have, and Lord, I pray today for the men and women that serve our village, continue to give them strength and wisdom, and Lord, I pray for the men and women that are going to be out in the weather here this coming season, Lord, give them protection, give them safety. Lord, we just thank you for your love and your grace, and we pray that we continue to follow you with commitment and dedication, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want everybody to turn off their cell phones. Roll call.
Mark?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Clepper?
Here.
Eggly?
Here.
Have before you the November 20th regular council meeting minutes. Any corrections?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Beverly?
Stand.
Yes.
Upstate?
Yes.
Far?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Okay, have before you the bills to be paid. Any questions?
Benson, change order of a little less than eighty-two thousand.
The change order was for fourteen thousand one seventy-nine. The total payback, the second payback, was eighty-two thousand four fifty-five forty-nine. That was for adjustments to quantity, so we call it change order. They ended up doing a lot more milling and a lot more stone to the trench, asphalt and carpet.
Where is this at?
That was on Maple Lane.
You said, do this again, you got fourteen thousand dollars, but it's not with that eighty-two, and then you say that it's...
No, no, the eighty-two was the total.
Okay.
That was the second payback, was eighty-two thousand four fifty-five. The fourteen thousand one seventy-nine was the change order portion of that.
How about on the, for sidewalks, Perna forty-three eight forty-five? Is that all the village, or are we going to get that back?
Yeah, that's all assessed.
All of it, all of it has a place to go. We didn't do anything for ourselves this trip.
Is he done with all that now? Or is he going back to doing any finishing work?
Nope, he's, should be done with it.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second. Yeah. Roll call.
Burr?
Upstate?
Eggly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is boards and commissions. I see no notes or minutes. Well, somebody's got something to bring up. Okay, and then the notice, the village council, which will be in two weeks, will hold a public hearing December 18th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers to hear a request by the planning commission to rezone 301 Musargon from A1 agriculture, public use, to B1 central business, B2 local business, and B3 general business. Just a hearing coming up. The council committee reports, finance committee met November 22nd, minutes on the packet. Any questions on those minutes?
I'll go over a little bit of it. We went over all the line items for about the fourth time, still had a lot of unknowns when it come to the park, both the village, not knowing what was going to move forward with the pool. And after we went over all the line items, Cheryl had the numbers where she wanted them, and she recommended we keep them where they are. If after first of the year comes in, let's say the pool would not pass, then we could amend the appropriation, same thing for some of the fire EMS budgets. We also talked about one item, I know it was brought up by a village employee about paying out for their vacation times, so they can accrue, they can carry over up to two years of vacation time over, and then they accumulate that vacation time throughout the year. Let's just say, for instance, somebody had three weeks vacation, they could carry over six weeks, and during that year, they carry, they gained another three weeks, they could have up to nine weeks, and some of those individuals think it's, you know, it's kind of hard to take time off work for short staff, and want to know what council's thoughts were if they could turn those days in instead of taking days off and being paid out for them, not all of them back down to zero, but to the maximum that they could carry over. So if somebody has nine weeks of vacation, they could get paid out, if they didn't take any vacation all year long, they could get paid out for three weeks of vacation and go back down to their six weeks that they can still carry over the following year. I know we encourage people to take time off work, to get a break from work, relaxation, family time, and everything else, but we understand maybe there might be some situations where for the few days it's hard to burn, and it doesn't go by fiscal year, it goes by their hire date too, so everyone's on a different timeframe.
The village doesn't have a cap on how many you can acquire?
Well, for instance, yeah, I mean, you have a maximum. Yeah, this isn't sick time, this is vacation time.
That's our policy.
Yeah, you can carry over, you have, use it or lose it.
It's current policy, yeah.
That's what most of the carriers, use it or lose it.
Yeah. Okay, any thoughts on that?
I know when we talk about Cheryl, and I mean, it was brought up just a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, and it was, wasn't in any of the budgets for any of the departments yet for this upcoming year for paying that kind of money out for everyone, so something that we talked about, if council wasn't interested, maybe personnel committee should talk, you know, get more involved with and get something set up because it'd be a benefit for the employees, we'd have to have something come around for everyone to vote on again, so.
So you need some thought, let the council think about it, you're not going to do anymore for next year, maybe?
No, I mean, for, during next year, I mean, we can get something, it won't affect everyone the same because their hire dates are all different, so it's not like, you know, you got until December 31st to use your vacation time up.
Okay.
And the last item we talked about was mayor's court, to keep mayor's court, get rid of mayor's court, initially, we were in the thoughts of getting rid of it, but then after a lot more research, we found out it was really necessary to keep it, so might find out a lot of stuff when it comes to...
Especially the tax lady.
Yeah, the tax lady here in town, yeah, that really helps out getting people to pay their taxes, so.
Once you get rid of it, you don't get it back either, so we decided, yeah.
Looking more into, I've talked to chief, I've talked to Troy, talked to county a little bit, Cheryl, Kim, like to maybe continue to keep it going, make sure it's vital, carrying enough revenue to cover the cost of mayor's court, things of those natures, and then the impact it has, we, you know, council president, you know, do the training and things of that, make sure that's due in June. Kim, right now, because we do not have local mayor's court going on, municipal through that direction, with her tax collections because of deadlines and everything else, I talked to her today, and Cheryl's worked on that too, it's how when she reaches out to get their filings done because of the extension in October, she can finally send them a letter and saying, you know, I have not received your tax documents, and things of that nature, me and Troy talked about this later this afternoon, so something that she would need some direction on, on how to finish up this year with tax collections. She's not allowed to correspond or do anything until after October, so, but we talked about it a minute ago, because there's some direction for her to do for this last year.
There is over six hundred letters that need to go out, she told me today, I was like, wow.
I don't think those are all this year, I think those are past years where they carry over year after year, it's not six a month this year. But she utilized mayor's court, you know, to get people to file properly, if they forgot or it was an issue, or someone moved out of town and been filed, or things like that, so.
Okay.
Once I got more information from her and talking to Cheryl, you know, it does have an impact in our collections.
Okay, good. Anything else? Comments? Any other council committee reports anybody need? Okay, administrators report?
I've only got a couple things. We did finish up leave season, except for the leaves in the lot, we'll still be taking those out on the lot till the end of the month as people bring them down. We ended up with sixty-two loads of leaves, so it was actually quite a bit less than we've done the last few years. Did submit an application a couple days ago for the wastewater infrastructure grant, apply for two million dollars, the project for the Defiance Avenue is two point six million, so we have a match of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're hopeful we'll be able to get the two million dollar grant to cover that project down there. They were supposed to start, we're supposed to start filling the new water tower tomorrow, but AEP had an issue with their scheduling, and they still need to set the meter yet for the new tower, so I'm hopeful they get that set this week, and if they can get it set this week, then we'll start filling the tower.
So what's the chances of this grant? Pretty good shot, we were lucky last year, got almost two million dollars for water tower in the water field, so.
From the folks that I've talked to, I think we've got a really good shot at it, you know, obviously nothing is guaranteed, but we did add a storm sewer into that to do a small separation, Oak Street, Hick Street, and going to separate Wendell Avenue as well, so, you know, on paper, it looks a lot better for the village rather than just doing all the sanitary work.
Well, I've done a lot of research, they're giving out a lot of grants for water and sewer projects, they're really pushing that.
There's a lot of money available.
Okay, good. Anything else? Any questions for administrator? Okay, solicitors report, Troy?
First thing I have is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, third and final reading by caption only, an ordinance establishing pay ranges, pay ranges for village employees and declaring emergency.
Third reading.
You say that is the final reading?
Can read for it.
Yeah, is that okay? So we don't need the emergency on?
Make a motion to, second, roll call.
Burr?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Eggly?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Second reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighteen by caption only, annual appropriations ordinance of the Hickso Village.
This one I did.
Cheryl says this one needs to get done.
Yeah. It's only the second reading, that's why.
Right.
Needs to be an emergency, so, someone has to spend the...
Make a motion to suspend the rule. Second. Second, roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Eggly?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
So then third reading of, or just twenty twenty-three dash eighteen by caption only, annual appropriations ordinance of the Hickso Village and declaring emergency.
So move, second.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
No.
Eggly?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Next is the third and final reading of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hickso, Ohio to enter into a contract with Vernon Nagel Peet for construction of a pool and pool house in Hickso, Ohio.
I would ask, with some of the things that are being said, some of the talk that's on the street, and there's a lot of talk, please, folks, let us table this until the next meeting. That's all I ask, just table it till the next meeting, till we find out what some of this stuff is, what is going to happen or not.
Can you elaborate?
No. But it's, it's a...
Has an impact on the town.
Yeah, has a severe impact on the community, depending on how it goes, and...
You're saying conditions unrelated to this ordinance, correct?
Correct. And we played with this thing, and to ask you to just hold off for another about two weeks, I think, I think at the end of the two weeks, you're going to go, that was a good idea. So please, consider this.
The second of a mess, make a motion on the thirty days we have, Cory.
No, we still have till almost the end of the month. The engineer did reach out and said that Mark Nagel had reached out to them and said that some of the material prices have already gone up, so they were hoping to get an answer, you know, sooner than later from us, because if we, you know, another two weeks, they may go up more, which we all know.
As long as you're still in that window, then he can't change the price on us.
Correct. Is that motion taken?
Yeah, that is my motion to table it until the next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Eighteenth.
And then you'll decide then?
Then we'll definitely decide.
Okay. You've got a second. Right, Eric?
Eric, second.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thank you all. Third and final reading of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hickso, Ohio to hire Rachel Hammer Smith as village solicitor for the village of Hickso.
Second.
Sorry, Troy.
Roll call.
Eggly?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Congratulations, Rachel.
Thank you.
I didn't even say she's nothing better right here.
Is that all you have, Troy? Any questions for solicitor? Department heads, police chief.
So the first thing is make a recommendation to hire Jennifer Carrier as our administrative clerk for the police department, and she has PERS time, she's got approximately about eight years, maybe eight years plus, so she would accumulate vacation for her eight years of service under PERS, which I think, when we discussed in executive session, we didn't have enough for a court or the vote, I think we would give her two weeks starting out, and then two additional weeks at the end of her first year, which I think is four weeks total, is that correct, Cheryl? Service of eight years, so.
I'll recommend that we hire Jennifer Carrier.
Give her all, give her a month?
Do what?
Hire and give her a month of vacation?
Twenty-seven.
For two weeks.
After your year.
Motion, we got a second. A second, roll call.
Burr?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Sure.
Martin?
Yes.
Clepper?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
And the second item I have, we'll be doing a walk through on the site of the Marx Tower on the 12th, and then with the construction company and with Marx, so, and then hopefully everything will be a go shortly after that, it'll be operating.
They'll put it online after your meeting, I think?
It's open, so, so they said we were doing a walk-through, so I'm assuming we are close to putting that switch on.
Two questions, what time would that walk put, do you know the time of the walk-through? Turn it.
I think it was at ten o'clock, I think, so.
Yeah, I'll check, I think it was at ten o'clock. How many years did Julie have? She retired.
Well, she had additional twenty-six years, plus whatever she was there before that.
So congratulations to Julie, and thanks for her service.
Yeah, we'd like to thank her for her service also. We will miss her, and she's a great asset to our agency, to the community, to all agencies that we work with every day, you know, and a great person, so we will definitely miss her.
She's been dedicated.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for the chief?
I think, and then you should have in front of you all calls for service and cases for the month of November.
Okay. That's all I got. Any questions? Okay, thanks, Jim. Fire needs, Bruce.
That's round again, the call sheet that we've done through the month of November. Also, five oh four, our mainline pumper has been repaired, it's back in the, back to the barn, ready to go. I wouldn't say she's a hundred percent, but being twenty-two years old, who would be a hundred percent, so. We repaired what we could and what we still can, so, that's all.
That would pass the test with this repair, that's the main thing.
Any questions?
Okay. Thanks, Bruce. Park director, Val?
I have Val.
Gary?
Not me either.
Fiscal also report.
Yeah, mine's short, fund status and cash summary, so put in the November income tax and utility department collections.
I see we're up thirteen percent, that's really good. Home income tax collection. Any questions for Cheryl?
Did you get the other two responses from the RFP?
Not yet, but it was looking good, could be a fight. Yeah, so we're pleased, we're below seven.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Cheryl. My report, Christmas cruise is still going on, they could use some volunteers, I've got to call and volunteer myself, but it takes a lot of people to keep it going, and hopefully everybody's going through it, it looks very nice. Van Cress has a public open house, they changed it from the 10th December till the 17th. I just talked to Mark White today, and it's from one to four, the 17th, open house, and I think he's going to move patients right after that, before Christmas, so.
They didn't change the other day, did they?
What?
They tried to guess, they didn't change that, did they?
I didn't hear it.
Hey, what'd I tell him? VIP.
Oh, that's a... Sorry, I can't hear. I want to make sure I hear, not give you the wrong information. I had a couple come into my office this week, and I don't know if you know Jim and Carol Slattery, they walk the streets, and they said that we have a major cat problem, and we've known that, so that's something we need to look at. I know Defiance, they bought some cat traps, I don't know if anybody know that, but he offered for us to borrow them, and people have to trap them, and then either the people have the cats, or the city, the village, would have to spay and neuter, so he did offer for these traps to borrow, they had the same problem, they've done it twice now, I forget how many, you remember, Troy, how many?
It was a lot, though, but the people would like trap them on Friday night or something, and then they'd take them somewhere on Saturday, and then they'd have to come back and pick them up, and then basically release them the same place they got trapped, but they were spayed or neutered at that point.
Remember that in the budget.
And who's going to do that?
Yeah.
Nobody. Somehow the shelter...
Pet cat, take them over.
Shelter somehow.
Anyway, they come in very concerned, so I thought, well, I'll bring it up, keep it in your mind, I know it's been about, what, two years ago, we had a lot of people wanting something done, and council voted not to, so.
That's always been a hot topic.
Yep, it has, so.
I know people talking to me about it on the street, but I can't give them my answer.
So anyway, keep it in mind, but they walk the streets and they see them all over, so, okay?
I think that's all I had, anything else needs to come for this council?
Should we make an announcement about council open spot?
Oh, where?
Since Mark's going to be taking over the mayor's spot first year, like to announce, I don't know if you want to set a deadline for people to come in and let somebody know, let yourself know, that if you're interested in being a council member, to submit your name, submit an application, submit a resume.
That would be to complete his term, just elaborate for two years.
Yeah, it'd be two years.
Thank you.
We want to have a deadline for that.
So, you know, I would take a week's plenty of time, show some interest, so maybe have it in by the 15th of December, gives you a little over a week and a half, if you want them to come to me, or my...
The council can oversee that. The seat will be vacated until the end of the year, so, probably isn't until the end of the year, and that way the first council meeting, you can have it on my guest.
Is that what you want, give more time?
It's not me, I'm...
Last time, last time, we posted for a couple weeks, and then we took time to actually bring them in and interview them, and then, like you said, after the year...
Because this is a bad time, because of the holidays, and anything coming up, but we gave them two weeks.
Okay, so you want to wait until the first of the year to come in, is that what you said?
You give two weeks notice, I mean, a lot of people have two weeks to turn in their interest, letter of interest, and then first committee can have time to meet with them with the holidays and everything.
Okay, let's keep it the 15th, if somebody just, but get it out there to get people interested. Yeah, two-year term, and then, yeah, okay. Give them myself or Cheryl, either one.
Drop them off at the village offices, they...
Yep, anywhere. Good. Anything else needs to be brought before this council?
I'd just like to say we had a great turnout for the Thanksgiving meal, obviously, because we're growing, we did a hundred and, over a hundred and sixty meals this year, we did unfortunately run out of turkey, but we had some ham, we weren't expecting that big of a turnout, but it's continuing to grow into a great event, so.
Yeah, that's a great service.
Appreciate it, there's folks that donated desserts and thyme and everything else, so I just want to say thank you to everybody that helped out.
Well, thanks for going. Thanks for, Jim Schmidt, Chevrolet family or Ford family dealers, so, this is, you say the third year or fifth year?
Fifth year.
Fifth year.
That we did it, yeah.
Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Burr?
Sure.
And Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eggly?
Yes.
How you doing? Good. Good on adjournments. It's there.
They hit you pretty...